...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. As far as council members, we have one absent tonight. Mr. Kerr is absent. The rest are present. There's an open meeting act that's posted in the meeting room and is accessible to the members of the public. First item, second item on the agenda, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on February 20th, 2024, as on file with the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasurer's report and claims of the amount of $220,182.52. Approval of Boswell reported claims of the amount of $2,023.64. Approval of final pay request number three in the amount of $54,315.95 to the shown roofing for the Beatrice Municipal Airport roof bids project. Item H, resolution number 7234, granting permission to Community Players Incorporated and their designated permission to serve alcoholic beverages and to sell or offer, sale or pedal goods, wares, or merchandise upon the property, city property located in the city auditorium on Saturday, March 23rd, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. as part of their adult prom fundraiser. Item I, resolution number 7235, reappointing Sherri Beckman Beekman to the Beatrice Housing Authority Board. Item J, resolution number 7236, reappointing Susan Hartley to the Beatrice Housing Authority Board. Item K, resolution number 7237, executing the agreement with the Central Community College to provide clinical education services for students attending educational programs for health sciences through Central Community College. Item L, resolution number 7238, adopting and approving the executing of an agency agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics for project number 3-31-009-022-2024 to be submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration to obtain federal assistance for the Beatrice apron and reconstruction of taxiway C at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item M, resolution number 7239, adopting and approving the and executing of an agency agreement with the Nebraska Department of Transportation, Division of Aeronautics for project number 3-31-009-023-2024 to be submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration to obtain federal assistance for the fuel system project at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. Item N, resolution number 7240, entering into a hangar lease with Kim Jordan for the purpose of leasing hangar B6 located at the Beatrice Municipal Airport. And item O, resolution number 7241, adopting the revised Beatrice Public Library Handbook. Anybody want anything pulled off? Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed on the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second. Gentlemen, your vote please. Mr. Kerr is still on. And that passes seven zero. Okay, we have a couple of public hearings tonight. Public hearing is for the purpose of considering the application of the City of Beatrice for annexation of the property owned by the city, commonly referred to as a Schwarzkopf property located adjacent to Gage County Industrial Park, Gage County, partial number ID 004148000.
So, yes, this is the property that the city bought here, oh, towards the end of December, if you remember, out by the industrial park. It would be just to the west of Ridgeview Drive that's out there. City recently rezoned it to be general commercial, or excuse me, general industrial. And this is the first step, if you will, to annex the property. We'll have this hearing, and then we'll have two additional hearings after this, for this body to vote on, to ultimately annex this property into the city limits. By annexing it into the city limits, we then make it available for TIF financing on that location. City services are already located around there, so that's usually not an issue with regards to providing services and annexation of this property.
Discussion. Okay. From the public. Seeing none, let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:05 p.m.
Second. Your vote please. Passes seven zero. Second public hearing is for the purpose of considering the rezoning of all of blocks 12 and 13 Riverside Park Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, and lots 7 through 10 inclusive and lots 11 through 13, block 19 Riverside Park Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from general commercial to residential and general commercial district.
So this is a parcel property that's along South Highway 6, or excuse me, South 6th Street, Highway 77 here in town. When you get past Chautauqua Park as you're heading south out of town, the parcel there is on the east side of the road. It was zoned general commercial probably sometime around 2010, somewhere in that time period. At that point, the thought was to look to rezone the property along the highways as general commercial, have there be a commercial development. Since then, we haven't seen that type of development. We've had a chance to kind of review it and anticipated this particular location is most likely not going to be developed into commercial property, partly because it sits significantly higher than the road. The west side of the road there, you do have the roller rink, you do have the bar that's down there, so you do have some commercial development, so why we're not touching the west side of the road. But the east side of the road there from Graybel Avenue up to, I believe, Nichols Street or Nichols Avenue is what we're proposing to be rezoned at this time.
Council discussion. From the public. Seeing none, Mr. McLean.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:07 p.m.
Second. Passes seven zero. Now we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7242, executing any and all necessary documents to release and discharge Birchwood Estates Retirement Village LLC, Brian Malag, L. Joe Senick, and Jason
Stellic.
Stellic, and Jason Finch regarding the LB-840 economic development loan.
I move the resolution number 7242 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is an LB-840 loan that was made, again, sometime about 2015. The city loaned them money to do some initial development work, if you will, for a nursing home that, or assisted living facility. They were looking at about 9th and Dorsey Street. We had some provisions in there that they had to have construction done by a certain date. They didn't ultimately do the construction. At that point, the LB-840 loan called for them to repay a portion of that back to the city. They've made all those loan payments back to us, and so they paid everything in full, fulfilled the terms of the agreement, and so that's why before tonight is a release of all the collateral that we have on this particular loan.
Discussion. From the public. Seeing none, your vote please. And that passes seven zero. Resolution number 7243, executing any and all requests for reconvances deeds of partial reconvenance, or deeds of partial reconvenance, and any and all other documents necessary to reconvey partial to to Nicholas and Hannah Bell as part of A&amp;N Dog boarding LLC's LB-840 loan.
I move the resolution number 7243 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So what we have tonight is the city had an LB-840 loan in 2022 that we loaned money to A&amp;N Dog boarding. As part of that, we took collateral on three parcels, one being the building there at 19th and Court Street, one being the house that's owned by Dave and Amy Bell, and one being a house that's owned by Nick and Hannah Bell. Nick and Hannah Bell are selling that particular house, that's why they're asking for the release of the deed of trust on that location. And so we'll still have the collateral being the other two deeds of trust that are out there, which will have us more than securitized on this particular loan.
But they're current.
They're current, yes. Everything's going well. Everything's going well. They're making all their payments, no issues there, no nothing.
They look busy.
Yep.
They are busy.
Discussion from the public. Seeing none, your vote please. And that passes seven zero. Resolution number 7244, entering into a loan agreement with Michael S. Schaefer and Shelley R. Schaefer for direct financial assistance for a facade improvement at the building located at 615 Court Street.
I move the resolution number 7244 be passed and adopted.
Second.
All right, so Michael Schaefer was received part of our 2021 downtown revitalization grant, in that he received a grant allocation of $56,000 to fix up the marquee on the holly, which is on the north side of Highway 136 downtown. He has a contractor lined up, we have everything ready to go. The issue is the contractor's requiring a down payment of $56,000, and he can't receive his grant funds until he expends the money first and gets reimbursed by the state of Nebraska. So we have a kind of a chicken and egg thing going on here. So the proposal before you is for the city to loan, Michael, $56,000 out of the LB-840 loan. He then pays the contractor, gets the work done, we submit reimbursement back, and when the state sends the reimbursement funds back, they actually come to the City of Beatrice, then those are used to repay the loan before you tonight. And you see the loan we have written is for a one-year term, or until he gets reimbursed by the state of Nebraska. State of Nebraska should be much sooner than that. This entire thing has to be done and finalized by April 25th of this year, so it's a very short time period. Assuming the state takes 30 days once they get the paperwork, that's kind of the timeframe we're working on there. And then as collateral, I think we took deed of trust on the property downtown and the house and some other stuff. So we're collateralized on this, but that's the reason for the loan, and that's kind of the timeframe we're working.
Discussion. From the public. Seeing none, gentlemen, your vote please. Passes seven zero. Okay. Moving on to ordinances. Ordinance on the proposed annexation of property owned by the city, commonly referred to as Schwarzkopf property located adjacent to the Gage County Industrial Park, Gage County, partial number ID 004148000.
I move the said ordinance be given number 24-9. The title there be approved. The said ordinance be read by title only one time tonight.
Second. To suspend the rules is not, whoops.
Nope, we're not suspending the rules. You cannot suspend the rules on an annexation.
Odds right, okay.
So you have to read it by title at three separate meetings. And so tonight's the first one. Planning zoning heard it earlier tonight. They had recommended approval of the annexation, and so we bring it to you for the first time.
Further discussion. If not, gentlemen, your vote please. Seven zero.
Can you bring the map up quick so people in the audience can see what we're looking at?
Yeah, we had it the first time.
Did everybody want to see it? There you go.
Okay, yeah, I figured that. Ordinance number 24-9, an ordinance to extend the boundaries and include it within the corporate limits of and to annex to the City of Beatrice, Nebraska. Partial land owned by the City of Beatrice, Nebraska, a municipal corporation which is adjacent, contiguous, and located in or near the City of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, to provide service, benefits thereto, to repeal conflicting ordinances, and to provide for publication in pamphlet form and effective date of this ordinance. Good thing my mom made me read to her when I was little. Okay. Ordinance, the next ordinance is amending the zoning map for the City of Beatrice, Nebraska by changing the zoning of the property legally described as all of blocks 12 and 13 Riverside Park Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, lots 7 through 10 inclusive, lots 11 through 13, block 19 Riverside Park Edition, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, from general commercial to residential commercial district.
I move the said ordinance be given number 24-10. The title there be approved. The rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. That passes seven zero. Ordinance number 24-10 by number only the first time, number 24-10 the second time, and number 24-10 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 24-10 be passed and approved.
Second. Any more discussion needed on this item? Okay. Your vote please. And ordinance number 24-10 passes seven to zero. Okay. The next ordinance is vacating all of block 4, 5, and 12 in Greens addition to Belvedere Heights, and vacating the closing portion of Bluff Street, Marlborough Street, Swarthmore Avenue, Edgemont Avenue, and adjacent alleys, all in Greens addition to Belvedere Heights located northwest of Belvedere Street and Center Street.
I move that ordinance be given number 24-11. The title there be approved. The rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. That passes seven zero. Ordinance number 24-11 by number only the first time, 24-11 the second time, 24-11 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 24-11 be passed and approved.
Second.
So this ordinance, the next ordinance, and the next resolution are all related to one another. And so what it has to deal with is some property out at the intersection of Belvedere and South Center Street. So you're out by Lake Ladoo, you head west from Lake Ladoo. The parcel on the west side of Center Street was actually platted in 1888. I don't know why they platted it, but they platted it. And so you've got Swarthmore, Edgemont, and all these other streets up there, which obviously have not been used and don't do anything. Unfortunately, they still do exist, and so they are still city right-of-way. To the west of this property is land that's owned by the DeBoer Trust. So they came to the city and said, we're looking to do some replating. They already own all the parcels in pink that are on your map there. When we clean this up, is the city willing to sell us the part in the black, the vacated streets there and some alleyways? We looked at it. What we did was we looked at the price per square foot of the bare ground around there, came up with what the average price per square foot was, multiplied by out by the amount of square feet they were buying, and came up the price of $2,544.30. They said, yep, they'd be willing to pay that much for it. So first thing we're going to ask you to do is vacate all of the stuff in the black tonight. Once that's vacated, then we're going to go back and ask you to sell all that stuff to the DeBoer Trust, and then they'll come back here in probably a next meeting or two and have a new plat that includes all of this in with their ground and make some additional parcels out in that location. That's kind of the long-term plan we're getting to, but phase one is what you see before the night. First, the vacation, and then the sale.
Discussion. From the public. Seeing none, your vote please. That passes seven zero. Ordinance conveying real estate owned by the city to J.A. DeBoer.
I move the said ordinance be given number 24-12. The title there be approved. The rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second. A motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote please. And that passes seven zero. Ordinance number 24-12 by number only the first time, 24-12 the second time, and 24-12 the third and final time.
I move the ordinance number 24-12 be passed and approved.
Second. Any more discussion needed by anybody? If not, your vote please. And that passes seven zero. Now we'll go back to a resolution number 7245, entering into the contract for sale of real estate to J.A. DeBoer.
I move the resolution number 7245 be passed and adopted.
Second. Any more discussion needed? Seeing none, your vote please. And that passes seven zero. Ordinance number 24-7, third and final reading, amending section 9-130 of the Beatrice City Code regarding when the sale and discharge of permissible fireworks are permitted within the city.
I move the said ordinance number 24-7 be read by title for the third and final time.
Second. Okay, open the floor for discussion.
I'd like to make amendment to this ordinance to change the dates to allow the sale of permissible fireworks within the city to be permitted on the days of June 30th to July 4th of each year. And from the June 30th to July 2nd would be 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and the 3rd and the 4th, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00.
Second.
I've had several more phone calls on this, and I'd first like to start off and ask, how many vendors of firework sales are there here tonight? Okay, we've had one vendor here for all three meetings. I've talked to other people, and we've changed this, and no offense to you, but you know, you're trying to keep your business going and do the best you can. But I presented, you know, neighbors of mine, you know, 30-some signatures, there was other signatures. I've had four phone calls over the weekend where people wanted to go back. I told them that that wasn't going to pass. I tried it, and so I've amended it to, you know, add that one more day. We changed it down to six, you know, but that's not enough. We've had it four days since 1989, and people have lived with it. And I understand, you know, yes, it helps, you know, your business and things like that, but you can still go to Hickman, you can go other places and buy them, you know, starting on the 25th. The whole thing is, is we've had people that want these, we've had people, you know, that wanted change back. They were, you know, they were happy with it, or they tolerated it. And then we go and change it, and we've had nothing but, you know, complaints. The whole thing is, is we've had, you know, people here that, you know, on the council that, you know, they don't really care, you know, whether it's, you know, where it goes and stuff like this, which is fine, you know, it's not a big thing for them. But the people that have been, you know, that is suffering and stuff with this, and that, you know, it means a lot to them. I know it's hard for the police department to, you know, get it. People are going to fire them off, you can say it. They are going to fire them off beforehand. But why should we encourage it? You know, I mean, we, it just seems like we opened up a can of worms here, or the previous council, you know, when we changed these things, you know, now we're trying to, you know, limit it back, but it, I don't think it should have been changed in the first place because it was going fine since 1989. And so I would like to see this. I, you know, I've had people still ask me to do the first through the fourth. I said, I know that won't pass. I'm hoping, you know, that I can get some support for the 30th through the 4th. So that's what I'm bringing forth.
Okay.
Go ahead. No, there you go.
Gary, go ahead.
Okay, as you know, Duane, Tim had a view that was not I curious. He wanted him to go longer. So again, this is a compromise, and we voted on it twice and affirmed it, and I would hope that we could do the same thing the third time. You can probably find 100 people with your idea, Tim the same way, and all of us in between. So this is a compromise. Vote on the ordinance, and I would encourage everyone to vote like we did before.
Well, first of all, Gary, I want to thank Gary and his committee for the work they did on this, because it's not an easy task. When you change the things, it's not an easy task. Change them up or down, it's not easy, and you put a lot of work in on it, and I appreciate that. The thing I want to say tonight, though, is I support Duane's amendment, and I'm asking the rest of the council to do the same. I know that we've voted on this as a body two other times, and you're on the six days, but I don't want you to discount what the public is telling us. Duane will tell you that he's had a petition, he's got more than 100 signatures. Yep, we didn't have 100 people show up, but 100 people have voiced their opinions and said, we'd really like this changed, and to a shorter time period. And so that's what he's asking you to do. That's what I'm asking you to do tonight as well. We've had, we do have one vendor that has come and given us some information that I scratch my head about a little bit. He says, oh, you gotta have seven, I gotta have seven days because it makes my business more profitable. And then he tells us that people save up all year round to buy fireworks. Now, if they saved up all year round, they could buy fireworks if we would let them shoot them off for one day. And then he, and we're told that, yep, they can go just 12 or 13 miles down the road to Wyomar, and because they sell them for a longer period of time. And then he tells us that he's a wholesaler, and he sells it to the people that are selling them in Wyomar. So he's making the money here or there. And I appreciate those people that try to make a living. And but I took between personal contact, phone calls, emails, over this last round when it was seven days, 40-plus people reached out to me about that, and that's a lot. I don't normally take that many, get that much contact. And like I said, Duane had, you know, 130-plus people sign a petition gave to him, asked him. We've had probably a half a dozen people come up and ask us to do that, to change it back to a shorter period, and that's what I'm asking you to do tonight. I know that most of everybody here came tonight and said, I've got my mind made up, I'm going to vote for six days. I'm just telling you that if you change this six days, we're going to be sitting right here having the same conversation next year. So
Are you done?
I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't hear you.
I just asked you. I thought you were done.
No, but if
No, no, no.
So, and if you change it to six days, and you still have those same phone calls, I guess you can tell them, well, we took a day off of it. But I don't think the majority of the community is going to be satisfied with that. I think that if you can tell them, look, we changed it to this five-day period, and it was seven, and we changed it to five, I think they'll understand that. I think the majority of the people that came and spoke to us would be here complaining that it's too long if it was two days. So you have that as well. But the community, like I said before, I think the vast majority of the community tolerates this. They don't embrace it. And so I'm asking you guys to crack that box a little bit wider and give it a little more thought, support Duane's amendment, vote on the five days.
That was pretty good. I find it odd that the one holiday we have each year to celebrate the independence of America, people are complaining about. So what I'm hoping is somebody in this crowd, because by his 130 signatures and your 40 phone calls, so that's 170.
Oh, I think they're the same. I think the same people.
Oh, so we can, we're going to leave it at 130. I'd like somebody to get one of these illegal petitions with 150 signatures on it, bring it here. I want Halloween stuff up from the 25th to the 31st only. I only want to be able to sell Christmas presents from the 19th to the 25th. If that's what you guys are going to base your decisions off of, that's just ridiculous. You got a man trying to make money out here. It's not like an individual. You yourself said the majority of the city. There's over 12,000 residents. You're talking about 130 people. That's 1%. Give me a break. I'm done.
Okay, Mayor. Okay, here's the difference, and I don't disagree with you on, you know, the holidays and stuff. But Christmas and Halloween, you do not have things going off until midnight, keeping people up, people with, you know, dog pets and things like that, fireworks going. And the problem is, you know, there are people out there that are firing off illegal things. I understand that. You're not going to stop it. The police are going to have to try to control it. But Christmas, Halloween, Thanksgiving, those aren't having, you know, you're not having things flying in the air, shooting off, and things like this disturbing people's peace. Now, if you don't want to listen to Christmas music, you turn the radio off.
But if you're going to drive down Lincoln Street, and there's blinky lights, and it's going to cause somebody to go into a seizure, what are you doing there?
Okay, so we'll stop light pollution. We'll stop
Okay. Are we going to shut lights off on Lincoln Street during Christmas?
You know, we're talking about noise, you know, and, you know, I'm talking about how it affected, you know, my folks and things like that. I'm talking about how it affects my pets. You know, I got several calls from my mom. She was thought something You know, I got several calls from my mom, she was thought something was wrong with the house last year because it was shaking, you know, it was being illegal. Now, I know there are illegal fireworks. But we had it since 1989 until then and nobody complained about it. And every vendor made their money and stuff and then all of a sudden we have to change it to seven days.
Any, okay, hang on Gary, let me see if somebody else has something to say before that.
I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah, well, those of us on the committee didn't go around looking for people to sign a piece of paper, one way or another. We heard from a few, but not that many. And my experience has been it's a hell of a lot easier to get people to vote against something than for something.
Any other comments from the council before we go to the public? Okay. From the public, we are discussing the, the amendment as presented to go from, well, to go to five days for selling and for discharge.
Evening gentlemen, Chris Coulson, 1725 Ella. I had some thoughts from the last meeting, I wrote them down so I could stay on track, so please bear with me. I truly believe we're here tonight because of a mistake that was made last year, which was allowing the sales of fireworks on the 5th. I, I truly believe that's where it all stemmed from. And a lot of that was from people shooting the fireworks after the time period was allowed by, that was allowed by the city. To start off, I have some questions about the petitions submitted at the last meeting. During the last meeting, we had councilman state that he had a petition signed by 40 of his neighbors in his ward. We also had a lady who came forward, says she had around approximately 100 signatures, as we also just discussed this evening. My question is, was a filing fee submitted for these petitions? Were the petitions notarized? Were the documents filed? And was there a copy of the ethics form that's required to be with a petition? For argument's sake, let's just assume that they were, okay? So we're looking at 140-ish signatures on petitions. We had a gal from dispatch state that there was roughly 24 calls, which I would like to know what time of night those calls came in. So there's, let's just say there's roughly 200 people complaining about the season. If you do the math, that is .016% of the population. That is nowhere near the, the, the total population of our citizens, okay? So how many people refused to sign the petition? Okay, if you do the math, roughly 99 to 98% of the town did not sign this petition, okay? So isn't it your job to represent the majority? Again, I refer back to a poll that was done on Facebook. 52% of the people said they liked the season the way it is. 29% said they did not like it, the rest said that they do not care either way. The people that are voting for it on this poll is the younger population, 24 to 45, okay? It's the older population that is against it and I'm not against the older population, okay? I wish, I wish I still had my older parents around, okay? I, I respect our elders. But I also have some questions, or I would like to answer some questions from the last meeting also. The first one was, why are there no other vendors here? The reason that I'm the only vendor here is because I got more skin in the game. The other tents in town, if they don't make, if they don't sell their product, if they don't make the money they need, it's no skin off their shoulders, okay? They go to a vendor like me, they get a check, they return the product, life is good, life goes on, they go on to the next, whatever they're going to do, okay, next fundraising event. I don't have that option, I'm the one writing the checks. I, I order my product direct, I go in with a warehouse of mine, we order direct from China, my product's already in, okay? I, I plan for selling dates as of, as what was going on last year. I have no one to send my products back to because I own them. I'm the one that invests in the product, pay for shipping, supply insurance for myself and my other stands. I pay for insurance year around for the, the equipment and stuff that I have. I pay federal, state and local taxes that, by the way, went up 20%. And just simply put, the less time I have to sell, the less time I have to generate funds, okay? Second statement I'd like to dispute, another tent in town said that the extra days didn't help them. I can't speak for them, I'm speaking for my location, my tent, the way we operated. I'm not a public speaker, I don't like speaking in public. So if our tent did not do better with the extra days, I wouldn't be here. I'm not trying to get extra days just to have extra days. Our tent generally, are genuinely made more money with these extra time, with this extra days. In fact, I had a tent in Lincoln that was awash because it got rained out and I was able to help that, that boys' club make what they made the, the previous year by the extra funds that I had. I donated that to them to help them meet their, their goal. At the last council meeting, we had a councilman state that Mr. Es, Es, Escra is the expert on the council and I agree with that. I also remember Mr. Escra saying that he sells in Carney, I believe it is, is that right? He sells in Carney, they have no issues with their ordinance. Their ordinance is June 28th through July 4th. If we change the ordinance, my company's going to miss out of three banner years. What I mean by that is, I did, I did what Mr. Escra said at the very first meeting that there was about this. I went through and put the days of the week to the dates. We're going to have banner years if the, if the season's left the way it is, just because the way it falls on weekday, weekend days. So I, I just asked, that you would really consider what the people want. I mean, the people that are yelling the loudest are the people that are being heard. The people that really want this, they're not here because they're taking care of their families. I had a whole slew of people say that they were going to come. A lot of them had their kids got sick or mom had to work so dad had to stay home and get, get supper. So it's not always about the, the numbers of people that show up. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I will just make a comment on all surveys and all Facebook. All of those are unofficial, all of those are not statistically accurate. So we probably don't want to use a lot of that reference either side, either side.
That's the way the intergenerational stuff.
Well, I'm just saying from a statistical standpoint, we have to be really careful because.
What about the petitions?
That's what I said.
Okay.
I said both.
Okay.
Yes, because I, I don't take any, I, I don't hold any credence in the unscientific, whether it's signed petitions that you went to your neighbor's house or, you know, I know there's a lot on Facebook, but again, there's a lot of statistics that go into surveys. So that's the only thing I'm trying to point out, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You bet. Okay, next.
Good evening gentlemen, Dana Hido, 208 Sherman Street. Wow. People are passionate about this, right? You think what I can take from all of this is that there are people that really want 10 days probably, is that what the law says? And then there are people that would really prefer we didn't have it at all, or maybe just on the 4th. So here we are, right, here we sit. The law that you passed last year didn't work. Just didn't, you got complaints, you heard about it. A lot of the, I don't know how many of you didn't even vote on that because we did have a pretty big change in the council. So if you didn't vote on it and you're just having to deal with it, I'm sorry for that, that doesn't seem quite fair, but. And for those of you that voted on it and you voted yes and now you're having to deal with it, well, that's your own fault. So here we are, so what is the answer? Well, when I see compromise, for those of us that would have, did put up with it for four days since 89 and we just said, okay, that's, that's, that's it, people enjoy it, I enjoyed them, they're beautiful, they're fun to watch and you just get used to the noise and you just deal with it and that was okay. But if you ask me, when I was going to school in Lincoln, I really liked the 3rd and the 4th. That was really nice that it was only the 3rd and the 4th. But here it was just the 1st through the 4th and we all said, okay. But we could have 10. So it seems to me the five days really is the compromise. It's right in the middle. We could have zero, we could have 10, five days. And I do think you really see both ends. People hate them or they love them. And there is some middle ground, but not a lot. It's amazing to me when you talk to people. And I agree with you, Mayor, you know, you can't say the petition is scientific and Facebook isn't, or vice versa. They're both what they are, right? You go around to your neighbors and you say, do you agree with this? Yes or no, they sign it or they don't, same with Facebook, people will do it or not. And I feel, Chris, I feel for you because we can say it on both sides of us, you try to get people here and things happen and they don't show up. So that's fair on both sides also. So I, I guess, again, just to say, to me, five days is truly the compromise, right in the middle. None of us are really happy and I think that means it's compromise. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Leish Turner, 308 South 22nd Street. So what Chris can't vouch for, but I can, is the love that both my grandpa and my grandpa had. The last four years, we've dealt with either my grandpa passed away or my grandma passed away. Before they passed away, we, me, my kiddo, my mom, my nephew, we would go purchase our fireworks from my uncle's tent. We would then take them over to my grandparents' house. We would sit there and light them off. My grandma would make a list of all the fireworks that she wanted to see next year. And I would always, always allow that sweet lady to have her wish because that's all she wanted. She wanted to see her son succeed in the firework business and she wanted to be right there with him. And by using his fireworks and having a little gathering at her house on 17th and Ella Street for all of her neighbors to come out and enjoy was the one thing she loved the most. Grandma's not here to do that anymore. And it's that, and it sucks. And last year was our first year without her. And while my daughter and I were selling fireworks to fund her DC trip to Washington, or to Washington DC this summer, we purposely went and found her favorite snow cone and lit them off in the parking lot, while it wasn't the parking lot, it was the street next to Twin Rivers where we were selling our fireworks. We did that in remembrance of her. People have complained that their animals don't like it. Neither do mine. I had a stray cat that I've taken in for the last five years. And while he is a house cat now, he spent his first month in the city of Wyomar and around the 4th of July, I don't really know what happened. But for the time the fireworks are going off, whether it's the 1st through the 4th or the 28th through the 5th, it doesn't matter, I'm not seeing him, he's hiding in my basement and the floor on the uncompleted part of my basement, like the ceiling, he's up there trying to get away from it because he's terrified. So I went to my vet, because I love my cat, trust me, they say I'm the cat lady, it's probably true. I went to my vet, I told them, hey, Bean's got a really bad issue, he's got anxiety really bad. Fireworks scare the bejesus out of him. What can I do? He prescribed me meds. So Bean gets meds to help him deal. He still hates fireworks. It's the best that I can do because it's everybody's freedom here in America to light off fireworks. Okay. Somebody had mentioned that there's other ways to fundraise, to go to Washington DC. Okay, cool, I'm all about fundraising because now I'm going to take my nephew in two years. So you tell me where I can make $5,000 in 10 days and have his DC trip paid for, in full, because he put 10 days of work in for $5,000. So please tell me where those fundraising ideas are. The fundraising that Mr. Puliszi does, the T-shirts, the candles, the braided bread, everybody does those. I'm sure, yes, everybody wants another Beatrice T-shirt, another box of braided breads, another, another candle that doesn't even smell that good, no offense. So I've already done those fundraisers. My kid brought home 100 bucks. We hit up everybody in our neighborhood, granted, we didn't go out as far as we needed to because we knew we had the firework tent. Mr. Puliszi will also say, it can be done, but you're also going to have to have a very big freezer, a truck and at least five people to help you take those braided breads in. And you have to hit it at the right time for people who have run out from all of the daycares that are selling them.
We got about 30 seconds left.
Okay, perfect. So if you can give me idea of where I could get $5,000 to take my next kiddo to Washington DC, I'd be appreciative of it. But I think that the six days, seven days, whatever it is now, is what it should be as it's really not a big issue as what others are making it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on amendment?
Margaret Hayth, 104 West Granville. So y'all see this, I had 12 of these made up because that's how many people were supposed to be here tonight. So again, like Mr. Coulson was saying, things happen, people don't show up. So a lot of times I feel like I'm Don Quixote, out jousting at those winnows. And this is one of those times. But I'm not going to give up because I know how many people I've got supporting me on this. So we, you're talking about the six days, it seems like that's what this council is wanting as a compromise. So my question is, who is that six days compromise? Who is that really benefiting? Is it benefiting your constituents? How many have you heard from? I've talked to several of you and it doesn't sound like you're, this go around that you've really heard from that many people. So how do you really know? How do you really know what these constituents want? So is it, is it benefiting the, the vendors? Well, we went over that two weeks ago. There's only one vendor here that's showing up wanting to have the seven or eight days or whatever. So does it benefit the city of Beatrice? I've been hearing about all the sales tax revenue that we're losing. So last year, you allowed four extra days for selling fireworks. So how much extra money did the city of Beatrice make in those four days from the sale of fireworks? Anybody have that information? How much, how much did you make? So I did some math, you're wanting to do six days, two extra days. Well, in two days of those vendors in Beatrice would sell $100,000 worth of fireworks in those two days. City sales tax rate's 2%. The city's going to get a whopping $2,000. Gee, what is the city going to do with that $2,000? I'll tell you what, I'll write you a check for $2,000, I'll make a donation for $2,000 if that's what the hangup is here to not go back to four days or like I said, this group that I'm representing here tonight, we'd like to go back to four, but we will accept five. So that's what we're advocating for. Let's have a compromise of the compromise. So we're advocating for five days. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more comment.
Okay.
So I'll wait, I'll wait till everybody's done.
Okay, yep, we'll give you, we'll give the council one last wrap after we.
I thought everybody was done.
Yeah, I thought everybody was done.
Oh, yeah, please do. Please do. Yep, nope, you're fine. No, you're fine. I want to have you have the opportunity to talk before they do again.
Tony Arena, three oh eight South Twenty-first Street. Two thousand bucks is a lot of money for some people, so I'll just say that. One of the things that I want people to think about is, not everybody works on Monday through Friday. There are a lot of folks that work the weekends, and during the fourth, they have to work the fourth because their job says they need to. So, just keep that in mind, that not everyone works Monday through Friday, nine to five, they must work. They get Tuesdays, Wednesdays off, or Thursdays, Fridays, or every other weekends, or however their schedule's fit. You know, having those extra days really help those folks that, that work. Not the normal hours, I guess I would say. That's all I got for you.
Thank you.
I live in Belvedere at fourteen hundred, or nineteen hundred South Third. Mr. Mayor, members of the board, gentlemen, you've got, got a big job to lead this community like you've done. I gotta commend you for a job great, really good job, 'cause our community is one of the leaders in the, in our state, in our great state. I'm here to propose that we go back to four days, like we have before, because it has just kinda disrupted so many people. And I'm talking about older people, young people enjoy that so much, and I did too, fifty years ago. But I would like to have you consider going back to four days. I know you guys gotta make a lot of decisions and all, and you spend a lot of time in those chairs, but I would like to propose that you go back. Four days seemed to be working really well. Course you had a few little, there's always a few that kind of abuse those, and they let off some big crackers right near your door. Ignoring all that, I'd like to have you consider going back to a four-day time period. Thank you for your time, keep up the good work for this community.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on this amendment, okay?
My name's Braden Bednar, I live at fifteen twenty Ashland Avenue, and I think we should honestly keep the ordinance the same, because, in my opinion, I feel like this is probably one of the most important holidays to celebrate our freedom, uh, in this country, and also it brings really good revenue for the state and local taxes, it provides jobs for people in the community, and I think, uh, especially younger people in my generation enjoy it, and like others have mentioned, not everybody works that nine-to-five job and have the time flexibility, and I think being able to light your fireworks off longer and sell them longer allows more people to come together in the community and spend time together and celebrate our freedom that we get in this great country.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else before we turn it over to council for one last comment or two, and then we'll vote on the amendment?
Chris Olrich, fourteen oh nine Ashland Avenue. So, councilman, with this ordinance, we've had the same one for over forty years. Last year you ripped the Band-Aid off and you changed the ordinance for the fireworks. In forty years, if it's six days or what we had before, or whatever you propose now, it'll still be the same fight. And honestly, the more days is enjoyable. You know, I've lived in this town for over thirty years, I have shot-off fireworks, I've been involved with it, and the more days is more appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, final comments on the amendment up here, any other-
I just, thanks, Bob. I just want, I'm gonna do something I really hate, I, that I never do, but, 'cause I hate it when I, people from the council talk to the people in the audience without making them come up. So, but let me ask you, so Chris, if we would've changed, if the, if Gary's committee would've come back and said, "We're gonna do this at five days," would you've been here asking for us to go back to six, or go to seven, or say it, go to eight?
Yes, I would.
Okay, so, the rest of you that spoke opposing this, if the committee would've said five days, would you've been here saying, "Five days is too long, you still need, you need to shorten it even more"?
I don't, I think five is a good, good compromise.
Okay, that, I'm just getting a little groundwork laid for next year, 'cause, because I think this goes, I think this vote tonight's gonna go with, uh, two of us voting for this amendment, and the rest voting against it, but, um, when we have to discuss this next year, and we're gonna have to discuss it next year if you vote that way, um, I just wanna have a little groundwork for it, so, that's all I had, Bob. Thank you.
All right.
Real quick, Bob. Just to clear things up, last year was eight days, not seven.
That's right.
It was the twenty-eighth through the fifth, so that's eight days.
Wasn't ten either.
Wasn't ten, it was eight, just so everybody's clear on that. And if we would quit bringing stuff up before the council that has very little opposition, we wouldn't spend all this time doing this, because when it's less than a percentage of the people, and not the majority that we're representing, we wouldn't be doing this. Kinda like, if we based it off of that, I still stand by, I can open my email right now, and I've got more emails about chickens than I do fireworks. Just saying.
Okay. All right, now, this vote is on the amendment, and correct me if I'm wrong, to discharge and to sell fireworks for five days. So gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passed five to two-
I think it's a-
Or failed, rather, five to two. Yes. Okay. So now, that brings us back to the original, uh, change in the ordinance that is discharging and selling fireworks for a total of six days, and so we'll open the discussion to, to council.
I, I just wanna make it clear that I'm, I'm voting on this, and I'm voting for this, because if this ordinance fails at six days, it goes back to the other days, which would've been seven, so, that, I think it'd be, should be shorter, I'm voting for this, so I, I don't have to explain that to people, I'm voting for this because I don't want longer, I want it shorter, so I'm gonna be a yes vote on this. And, and if it's the majority of the councils wish to have it at six days, I'm gonna support that, so.
And I'm just the opposite, I'm against it, so I am voting no, but I understand why you're doing it, so it doesn't go back to the original.
There you go.
I will be voting no on it.
Is, is there any other discussion needed?
I would just like to get something clarified. So we had eight days last year, but since the last day, the eighth day was on the fifth, and that was actually in violation of the state of Nebraska laws, 'cause they only would allow through the fourth, is that not right?
No.
Okay, so when is the state of Nebraska?
Twenty-eighth to the fifth.
It is through the fifth, all right, then I was fed wrong information, 'cause I was told it was only through the fourth, and if we were on the fifth, we were in violation.
No, that's incorrect.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think it's been three readings of good discussion, and I really wanna thank everybody for participating and, and your viewpoints. So gentlemen, I think it's time, uh, we take a vote on this and put this to bed. Your vote, please. And the ordinance changes passes six to one, with Rue voting no. Okay. Ordinance number twenty, number twenty-four seven, an ordinance to amend section nine dash one thirty of the Beatrice City Code regarding when the sale and discharge of permissible fireworks are permitted within the city, to repeal all other conflicting ordinances or parts of ordinance, and to provide for publication in electronic form and for an effective date of this ordinance.
I agree with you.
Okay, we will move on. Is anybody here for the public forum? All right, seeing that, we're down to discussions. Uh, the mayor's prayer breakfast, and I believe Councilman Doy-
A little lighter tone here, um, we're gonna bring back the mayor's prayer breakfast. Uh, I'm on a committee with, with Ted and Gary, and we just wanted everybody to know that Trev Alberts is going to be speaking at the mayor's prayer breakfast, it's gonna be, take place on March twenty-seventh, um, out at the Holiday Inn Suites, Holiday Inn and Suites, north of town. We're gonna have breakfast served, and he's going to speak, and it is kinda what the name implies, it's the mayor's prayer breakfast. It's been real successful in the past, just kinda went by the wayside, we decided we'd try to do it again. Uh, we have tickets all over everywhere here, and Gary, you wanna talk about the organization that's helping us sell those?
I didn't hear you, Terry.
Do you wanna, would you, uh, talk about the organizations that's helping us sell the tickets?
Well, we're, we're not an organization, and it's not a city function, we gotta be clear of that, but, uh, Bob's gonna be there. Uh, the proceeds from this, uh, whatever they are, we're gonna give it to the local FFA chapter, it just got revved up, and this is the first year, and we, the three of us thought that, and I hope the council thinks, and you do, that it's, it's a good cause.
And I'm, you know, just, uh, me speaking for me, that maybe each councilman take like ten tickets and either pay for them yourself and give them to people, or sell them, that would give us, I got twenty, that'd give us, us, and what we've done already, something over a hundred people, and would make this a success all by itself, but hopefully we can have a couple hundred people there, so we, we invite all of you to come, all right?
We ordered three hundred tickets, so, that's, that's all the room holds.
That's, that's what the room holds, so.
Hopefully we'll be okay.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um, okay, regular council session is, we're gonna, we're gonna actually go into executive session to discuss real estate.
I move that the Beatrice City Council go into closed session at eight oh two PM, discuss real estate.
Sir.